Go ahead and set up the special item number one, which is a motion for last two weeks. Moved by Miss Full Love, second to five.
Yeah, moved by me.
Mr. Morrison. All right, Mr. Flynn.
I think, Mr. Chairman, um, since you have thirteen cards here and the people are here, I'd like just to have a chance to speak to that certain, uh, know what their thoughts are. Secondly, I don't understand what my good friend, uh, Full Love meant that the police director should have checked with me or the resolution, but it should be our job. Uh, and, you know, if someone who had four or five years ago went down to civilian law enforcement review board path and got it delayed and less than nothing happened since then, I don't think we should be, I mean, I told the people when they came to meet with us, uh, stop messing around and just do it. And if we're not gonna do it, let's stop telling people we are.
Uh, all right, this is Chairman, I, 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 um, I, 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 I don't want to be privy to the voting on today and, uh, the fact that he's kind of a wonderful person. I mean, we were going in all of these officials who are here, I was not aware that all we asked many people that were here and, and certainly would not be fair to them. And, and just for my colleague's sake, the only reason I met with the police director is because I met with Brad Watkins and members of his group and other organizations, and they thought it would be a gesture of, show a gesture of goodwill to speak with the police director, a- and that's what I did. And I think Brad's since has messed with him, but I wanted to go on and vote on this item.
So you're withdrawing your motion?
I do, I withdraw my motion.
So we can go back to item number thirty, and I'm gonna start with the first, uh, cards, and these are in no particular order, uh, but, uh, once I call your name, you can come up, state the name and your address, and we'll be given two minutes. Paul Garner, and after him, it'll be Jim Brown.
Uh, my name is Paul Garner, I live at, uh, twenty ten Court Avenue, Concede, three eight, one, and four. I'm speaking to you today as someone who has gone through the internal affairs complaint process twice. Uh, the first instance was on November two thousand twelve when myself and two others were stopped for harassment, stopped for obstruction of the sidewalk, was released in the manhouse. It took nine months to follow up just to get a one-minute statement in there telling me that my complaint was not sustained, or was sustained. I then came here to the City Hall and filed open records request for the officer's personnel files, as instructed by I A D. It took another week to process our request, I had to pay fifty dollars for the fi- uh, file just to get two pages that informed me what actions we're taking by the department. The second incident took place on October twenty first of two thousand thirteen, when I was arrested for filming police harassment. My phone was confiscated and I was booked at two oh one Poplar. I filed a complaint with I A D after being released from jail the next day and all charges of being dismissed. This time it took six months to get a letter from I A D, only after numerous attempts to contact the internal affairs, as well as to sit down meeting with C A O Little and Director Armstrong. The letter I finally received told me that my complaints against officers were not sustained. How can this be? N P D released a policy on December nineteen, reaffirming that it is our constitutional right to film officers, yet my rights were violated and the officers were not held accountable by I A D's internal affairs process. I filed open records requests to view the officer's personnel files and found nothing pertaining to my case. It's taken six and nine months just to get ambiguous and unsatisfying responses from I A D. Imagine what other spaces they attempt to jump through these same hoops. What chances of people having seen this process through to the end? People have jobs, families, responsibilities, lives. If you wear people down, they'll cover their losses and move on. Where is the accountability in this process? I've navigated it twice, and I know how confusing and inaccessible it can be, uh, and I have the privilege of working for an organization that has the time and resources to allow me to follow up. Only to hit a brick wall at the end of the tunnel when I tried to appeal the findings of this investigation to civilian law enforcement review board, which has been secretly disbanded by the Department of Administration with no notice to this council or to the public. The number on the red side I called went to a generic voicemail where I left messages still unanswered in the line of messages.
Mr. Garner, to the content, I'm sorry.
Please vote yes on this resolution.
Jim Brown and then Mar- Marquita Brown.
Yes, my name is Jim Brown, I stay twelve ninety nine Tannen Street. Uh, I was home for twenty years, I have experienced a lot of harassment, uh, dealing with police, uh, until I got in my house, opened up college, and I'm still getting harassed by the police. And until I, they got YouTube scenes of me and my I A D showing that I was in college and I kept getting harassed, and it, and, uh, I've been working for a home song now for Power Four G, I'm well educated now and kind of educated, so, uh, as long as communities don't get harassed, because we are harassed a lot, uh, we are, like, we are targeted a lot, but, you know, I just want everyone to vote yes on this resolution for civilian law enforcement.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Marquita Brown Shaw and then Dennis Foster.
Hello, I'm Marquita Brown Shaw, forty three seven one five, your phone. Um, the civilian, if not the question of whether the civilian law enforcement review board should be reinstated, you guys decided on that, the city council decided on that a long time ago. So each day that citizens cannot access the citizen, the, uh, civilian law enforcement review board is unacceptable. By no means necessary should people have to go through a complicated process and get a big brick wall at the end because, uh, this administration, the staff person from the civilian law enforcement review board, Anthony Mohammed, was not replaced and no more appointees were made. So, please vote yes with the re- that resolution, there shouldn't be a problem with the language, because all it does is give the community a chance to tell how they want the civilian law enforcement review board to, uh, to operate, because right now it's not a effect and it's not fair and nobody should be able to circumvent law once it's put in place.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Dennis Foster and then Michael Kraus.
Yes, Dennis Foster, I live at twenty four eighty nine Harvard Avenue. And, uh, as Marquita says, uh, what we're asking for today is, uh, not that controversial, we want to set up a process where, uh, we, as a community organization, who has a very large base, can access information from the community on what they would like to see for accountability to some of the police officers. And you heard from Paul, what he currently set up is not working, um, and, you know, we hear a lot about how police officers, uh, are people too, and we hear that from the police union and others, uh, and, and I appreciate that and support that. Police are people too, and police make mistakes just like people, and so we need to create a structure and a process that holds them accountable to those who are visiting. This is what the clerk was supposed to be when it was founded, and that's what we would like for it to be in the future. We want the clerk to have subpoena power, real power, so that they can look at claims, um, for misconduct, retaliation, things like that, so we hope that you will vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Michael Kraus and then Caitlin Buford.
My name is Michael Kraus, six ten Poplar. Uh, we definitely need a civilian review board. Not all police officers are bad, not everybody's bad, but we do have some, we need to have something where we can be accountable for where, where the police have our, have mistreated against our fellow humans and homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Caitlin Buford and Scarlett Hunter.
Um, my name is Caitlin Buford, eleven sixty eight forty one Buford. I support the restoration of civilian law enforcement review board, and I think you will say that.
Thank you, Ms. Buford. Scarlett Hunter and then Deborah Larue.
Um, I'm Scarlett Hunter, forty one ninety nine Cutweiler Avenue. Um, just, uh, from my personal experience in a past city, I lived in Spokane, Washington, there were issues with community police relations, and the community called for a mechanism of accountability for the police board, and the city responded, and I saw a great amount of improvement in, um, in the, the, just the perception of the police, um, and the overall community there. Uh, I really believe that reinstating this, uh, review board will have, uh, increase the trust in the community, improve community police relations, and calls the police department here to a higher level of excellence. Um, I think it will be positive for the entire city, so, uh, please, uh, vote yes for the resolution to restate the civilian law enforcement review board.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Deborah Larue and then Brad Watkins.
My name is Deborah Larue, I live at twenty three thirty twenty, I'm twenty eight thirty, but I'm really hopeful, uh, vote yes on this initiative, this resolution, um, just in respect for citizens and children. Thank you.
Brad Watkins and then Curtis Alt.
Uh, good afternoon, Brad Watkins, twenty ten court. Uh, I wanna thank y'all for hearing your time today. It's been, uh, very difficult getting that before you. To give y'all a sense of timeline, we came to the administration with these concerns about the website that had all the information about the voicemail, the clerk that goes, that went to an un- unidentified mailbox. We came to the administration with these concerns last autumn, and nothing happened. And we reached out to the administration again last November, and nothing happened. And we reached out to the administration again this past December, and nothing happened. And we met with people in the administration in January and in April, and nothing happened. Further, we were told by the administration and by the department that we would have a response from them back on April twenty first. Guess what? That never happened. And you were told at the, uh, April fifteenth meeting that there would be appointments in civilian law enforcement review board today on day six. Looking at the fact that it's the last of the agenda once again, that never happened. We're talking about not just accountability with our police officers and the public and the chance to get a relationship, we are talking about the rule of law. So I've come here today to ask y'all to stand in support of the rule of law that was established by the city council in nineteen ninety four, and a process that has gone behind your backs and the members of the council and the public as well. The civilian law enforcement review board was established by law, but even today, uh, on the fifteenth, I filed, I filed for open records request to find the minutes of the civilian law enforcement review board from two thousand nine to today, just so I could establish when to stop meeting. And now for almost a month, I keep getting delay after delay after delay. The laws have to stop, and we have to have real transparency. Our process will let you be a part of that and let the community be a part of the transparency process for real or for... Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Curtis Alt and then, uh, Claudale Woodfield. Curtis Alt? And then, I do bet, Claudale Woodfield?
Hi, I'm, I'm not here, Claudale Woodfield, I'm with, uh, the South East Justice, I'm really telling y'all, we need her to go on the law enforcement review board. I think if we, I would say this is a, um, a police action. I was, uh, speaking, uh, to the police related to, trying to, uh, understand, uh, I understand that the police have worked very well, like, just trained them, like, if you're off, you have to be discreet. I learned to, I got no spoken, like, they said, uh, literally, they are people too. But I can't come close to them, I mean, they try and, you know, they won't speak, they won't disagree with me, and we're not trying to, uh, talk to them any easier. They're trying to stop home, so we need to understand that, you know, in, for the past several reasons, I want the opinion of that to be discreet, uh, you know, going to the citizens, with the opinion of, uh, this one before, and y'all leave that thing, I spoke, I was coming to this, Brad, Rush Shaw, uh, they have no brother. I hate things that he has grown up on, uh, and see, uh, both, the son of a shambles, a hundred and five, two hundred and five, my child comes in, uh, something's top out of the hole, my child is threatened, the wind, uh, obviously, whatever he wants, you know.
Curtis Alt and then Woodfield? Oh, that was Miss Wood, okay, so Curtis Alt is on here. Okay. Frederick Stevenson? And then Chris Martin? Mr. Martin's last card right now. On this option.
Good evening, my name is Chris Allen, speaks in coming sixteen twenty two signals. Uh, the reason why I'm here is, uh, the explanation, uh, is the court declared, um, hours once, uh, homeless employees on, uh, both, except for homeless, organized, organized, and thousands of classes, and having experienced the, uh, new brutality of the midtown quarter, uh, it was very long and far out of report, so back to you, when I fired out of report, cleared out of report, my report was never, was never granted, it was never, uh, uh, I see quarters out there now in midtown area who have, uh, mistreated the homeless people, some, or mostly it was homeless, some disregarded citizens for no reason at all. I feel like it's about, of course, it's a loose, to get it out to a better track, and let the citizens of, of maybe have a better relationship with quarters, I think we need to go back, someone with their, I think they should support this resolution better.
Thank you. Chris Martin?
My name is Chris Martin, I live at fifteen South Almondale, three eight one four. I'm a board member with the Midtown Southeast Justice, and I'm here today, as you said, the Midtown Southeast Justice Center strongly supports this resolution, and we hope to play an active part in public participation to restore and improve the civilian law enforcement review board. Today, we're not calling for the review board to be restored, we're merely calling for the establishment of a process to restore the board at later date. We envision a series of community forums, one held in each council district, where minions will have the chance to share their stories of police interactions and express their views on the future of the civilian law enforcement review board. There will come a time, some months from now, in August, after the forums are concluded, to decide the nature, the function, and the powers of this review board. But today, we call on you to establish an open, transparent, and accessible process whereby the community can play a role in restoring the mechanism of oversight for the men and women in uniform who keep us all safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, just full, uh...
Thank you so very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, before we take the vote, uh, I'd like to read the original resolution that Councilman Alfred and I are sponsoring. It says, whereas the Memphis City Council seeks to promote transparency and proper oversight in government and improve community relations with the law enforcement, and whereas the creation of the original law enforcement review board was an act of the Memphis City Council to assure that all residents have a means of holding Memphis Police Department officers accountable in instances of officer misconduct, and whereas the Memphis City Council recognized that the powers of the board are too limited to be effective in the completion of its duties, and whereas in two thousand nine, the Memphis City Council passed a resolution calling for the creation of an ad hoc committee to provide the council with information and recommendations for improvements to the civilian law enforcement review board, and that committee was never convened by the executive branch. Whereas, the Memphis City Council has been alerted that as of two thousand thirteen, the civilian law enforcement review board no longer exists, and its concern affair was no notice given, no input solicited, or consultation sought from either the council or the public, and whereas the Memphis City Council threw funding for the spiritual component of public accountability in the two thousand fourteen city budget, and whereas the Memphis City Council seeks to create an open and community-driven process to properly address this issue for the benefit of the entire community. Now therefore be resolved that the Memphis City Council will act in partnership with the Memphis United Coalition, a grassroots collective of over seven local community organizations, to host a total of nine community forums, one in each council district, to educate the public on the issue and solicit resident input. Be a further result that the Memphis United will provide the council with data, resources, national models, and best practices for the civilian law enforcement review board by cooperation with the National Association for Civilian O S A Oversight of Law Enforcement. Be a further result that the Memphis United Coalition will be tasked without compensation by the Memphis City Council with collecting and collating the inputs collected via surveys, testimonials, and community forums to present a full report to the council on August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, so the council can take appropriate action, signed by James Fully Love, Linda Albert, council members. And I assume...
Well, I think it already been moved. All right, any others, Full Love?
No, that's it, that's it.
All right, Mr. Flynn.
Yes, uh, having served on this back of two thousand eight, seems that limited power or just want to take time, if this resolution passes and this committee actually gets off the ground, as opposed to the last one we tried to do, that you look real hard at the powers, because that was the problem with the other one, is no team. And you gotta remember, since the dog of democracy in place, uh, the big question is who watches the watchmen? Let's get an answer to that.
I see no one else in the queue, please turn it up.
Boy, yes. Brown, yes. Collins, yes. Lynn, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Calvert, yes. Harris, yes. Loudre, yes. Morrison, yes. Chairman Strickland, yes.
Yes. All right, uh, we'll do say nine minutes, and I got, uh, four cards. Uh, Miss Full Love, do you do, can you say nine minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have item number thirty one, which is a resolution accepting grant funds in an amount of thirty one thousand two hundred dollars, and anytime training materials valued at ten thousand dollars from the National Recreation Parts Association absolute time program, and I assume...
Good move by Miss Full Love, taken by Mr. Morrison. Please vote. And then, Mr. Alfonso will be our first speaker, and Maddie Lambert will be the second.
Boy, yes. Brown, yes. Collins, yes. Conrad, yes. Lynn, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Calvert, yes. Harris, yes. Morrison, yes. Chairman Strickland, yes.
Say nine minutes passed. Uh, Mr. Alfonso, say your name, address, and you'll be given two minutes. Maddie Lambert will be the next speaker. Mr. Alfonso.
Peter Alfonso, eighteen fifty seven, Almondale, three eight one one four. I'm retired, uh, city employee, uh, thirty eight years. I was on the drop program, pretty great. I was a manager of the drop program, always helped me to start anticipating the deed I'm gonna have, with people retiring to the drop. It was very, very disruptive and very difficult, with the plan, uh, bringing on someone new and training someone new, and they would just say, I'm gonna leave in two weeks. So the drop program is very bad, but here's what I'm saying, please clarify my problem. Let's say I'm working, city, now fifty thousand dollars a year, okay? Let's say I retire twenty five years, let's say sixty percent, so I'm gonna make thirty thousand dollars in retirement. So I'm over here, I'm retired now, I'm getting thirty thousand dollars. That doesn't come out of the city, but it comes out of pension, is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you're not paying me thirty thousand dollars. Now, they were paying me fifty thousand. Now, when I go over here and start making thirty thousand dollars in retirement, they're gonna fill someone else in my place, guess they're gonna pay me fifty thousand dollars. Where is the city out of money? Out of money? If I am working for years, making fifty thousand in my job, why you prepare city, the administration, whoever it is, the, the organization, to prepare for my departure? And I'm putting thirty thousand dollars from the pension plan in a deferred account, which, uh, I will get after the three years, so, out of the city, out of money because of this drop plan. And you're not gonna pay me sideways, you're not gonna be paying me, you're not gonna be paid this by pension plan during the three years, but the new guy that comes on board through fifty thousand, you're gonna be paying me through pension plan. So I don't see you trying to do away with that, then I'm paying you two percent of all the problems you're dealing with. So tell me how the city's out of money, when my replacement makes my salary and my money of retirement for the drop plan.
Oh, he was taking pictures of my camera.
Oh, Christ, it's a picture.
You can get a text to each other.
Come on, come on. All right, all right, so, we got, we got the resolution passed. So what that means is, we've now got nine, one, two, we got three months. To get it together, we gotta have nine forms in nine different communities. We're gonna get that information, put it back together, so tomorrow night at the meeting, we'll start talking about how we're gonna break it down and divvy that up, so none of us are, like, having a heart attack somewhere around July, except for me. But thank you, everybody, for coming out, y'all did a great job. So, now, the important thing is, now the administration fucks around and tries to do some dilatory tactics in our forms and what I work, well, now they're not fucking with us, they're just following the will of the council. And that gives us just another reason to drop a press release, they come back every single time. But thirteen oh ain't bad. Read it, it's never passed a resolution, so y'all have done something that a member of the council hasn't done. So, Carol Chumney, I don't think it passed any. So, thank y'all very much for coming out tonight.
Damn!
Damn! Damn!
And we got say nine minutes, which means they can't bring it back out.
People are like, well, why are you against it? No, well, what I wanted...
Well, Dennis, she asked, she goes, well, have they met back with you yet? I said, they're supposed to be back, they're like, twenty first. And she goes, well, screw it, then, what do we do? They got a problem with the language.
Well, she screwed up and said that, rejected the proposal.
Exactly.
God, when she went for that delay, I was thinking, oh, this is gonna be screwed up.
Well, I kinda figured they were trying to delay it, so, and she screwed, they could've, it would've gone through if she had, uh, Mr. Director rejected it.
You know, who gives a shit what he thinks?
It's not, yeah, well, it's not a his person.
Yeah, he has, legally speaking, he has shit to do with it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, if, if that's, you know what, I object, I object to the, to the law that they used to pull me over, too. I object to that, I object to having to have passed.
You're one of those people now, huh?
Yeah, I'm sovereign citizen. I mean, that, we got an administration that's a sovereign citi- that's ignoring the law?
I know, there ain't no damn media here today, though.
Nope.
I could, like, TV in here, like, yeah.
Conley was here, he'll write up a...
Conley was here, he says he's gonna write up a small thing.
All right.
All right. (cough)
Wow, looks like it's been mowed. Oh, is that what you're doing? I won't watch. I won't watch. I've seen, I've seen it before anyway.
Oh, it hasn't been so bad. As long as I run over there asking somebody, I'm like, boy, you know, there's a few feet on the fence. How you be?
Good, how you?
I'm warm, but good.
We didn't see you last Wednesday.
Um, yeah, there was a crash going on last week. Yeah. I plan on being there this morning.
Well, I just came from city council.
Oh, good.
We got our resolution unanimous.
Wonderful. All right.
Every single one of them voted yes.
Great. So what does that mean?
That means we have three months to have a community meeting in every district and get input from the residents on what they want the citizens law enforcement board to do. And one of the really great things was city council in Shaysland had served on the board when it first started.
Mm-hmm.
And he said, let me tell you, this is a great thing that the council has.
Yeah, it does.
He said, we had no ability to do anything.
The community had to do that.
Because they didn't have the, uh, subpoena power, they didn't have the, they had nothing.
Okay, so, that's wonderful, I mean, it really is, but here's where my concerns are gonna jump in here at. We, as a group, open, uh, put on forums, like the word know your rights workshop, and then where you at the forum at Brimstone, where we open up the information avenues for the rape kits and so forth and on. We have been talking about doing things like that within a community setting, just inviting people out. So, this is where the question coming in at, when they say from each community, do they mean go to each community that has a quote-unquote commissioner or congressperson and do it? Okay, do it through the community? Or can you do it in the manner we have been doing?
We do, we need to do at least one in each community, every council district.
Okay, so what, so the council person can be there in attendance?
Uh, just so that we're sure that we're covering home bases, yes, but it's complicated, it's not really the way we're doing it. And I think we'd have thirteen councils, I think that's good.
Okay. See, I don't know anything about politics, and I know politics has kicked my ass all my life. And my grandma, emasculated, emasculated me from politics ever, as a young teenager. So, you know, it's like I never wanted to understand it, I know it's a lot of tricks, you know, and I know people are dishonorable and, and doing things according to what they wanna see done without getting the input from the people. And then the people are the ones that suffer.
Yeah, true, us, we don't.
Yeah, and it's not, I mean, that's not fair, and that's not right.
It's not what it's supposed to be.
So actually what you're doing, like my grandpa said, you're voting against two evils. You're giving your voice to two different evils, and one ain't no better than the other. So why give it any, give it to any of them? Especially when, when, and of course, she didn't know anything about the, the, um, the financial aspect of it, but she did know this one, she said, because when you're doing that, oh, you know, you're giving away what is rightfully yours.
Yeah.
So, she, she went me through it, she took me through a rightful passage back then, although I didn't know that's what she was doing until I went further in life and studied for myself to find out what, what was meant and what is being done, and where am I, and how does it balance, and all of that.
Well.
So, but I'm willing, I'm willing at this point, you know, to open up, because I know I shut down a lot of stuff, I'm willing to open up at this point because I've been so dogged out in life.
Yeah.
And I know if I'm being dogged out, how many other people are being dogged out? And if nobody takes a stand and do something to at least say, this is another picture, then they'll keep on doing it the way that they've been doing it.
Well, I've been a very close follower of politics since I was about twelve years old and decided that racism is a bad thing.
Oh, honey, it hurt me so bad, I was a little bitty girl in the cotton field of Sterling, uh, Sterling plantation, when, um, JFK was killed.
Yeah.
And, and, I, I mean, and, and it was like, everybody was so enamored by him, you know, he's gonna be the one that makes a difference for us in, in the cotton field, and during that time, they was giving us commodities in the ground bag. And so President Kennedy was supposed to been the one that came along and, and made a difference in all of that, and then all of a sudden he was shot. So, yeah, it's been, it's, ooh, I could go through stories, and, and, not stories, but truth, live truth after live truth to share as to what I've experienced and, 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 uh, come face to face with.
Well, see, I know I'm privileged, I've never been without options and resources. I've never been hungry, I've never been without a honey.
Oh, honey, options and resources was something that I brought up in the executive board meetings today. It's like, and, and I know they're, you know, the, the group quote-unquote heads would probably be really upset if they heard me saying stuff like this, 'cause they, they're on a different page, seem like. But there are those that are not privileged and honored, and those that are homeless, how can you ask a homeless person to go out there and rescue a homeless person? The homeless person ain't got nothing to rescue, go to homeless person with. They don't have stability, they, they from place to place trying to eat and sleep, you know what I mean? They got nowhere to get their mail, they don't know whether they're gonna wash their clothes, if they're gonna have change their clothes, you know, so how you gonna ask that person to go out there and rescue a person just like them? They ain't got nothing to rescue and with.
Right.
That's privilege, you know what I mean?
That's the people with the options, the, the privileged people need to be involved in this.
Yeah. And not it's on the backs of the bones that don't have, understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
It's like, um, you're asking me because I've been made homeless to go out there and pit for somebody else who's been made homeless. That ain't right, in my opinion.
Well, and it's not effective either.
It isn't. It really isn't.
What are you gonna do, you're gonna make call with someone who just wants you, so what, what good is it gonna be to one of them?
And then if I try to do something different than one out of town that's just like me, ain't gonna want me to do it, and that's the crab in the barrel syndrome, right? So, yeah, I back up from politics and organized religion.
Yeah. Get my brother, get there.
Yeah.
Well, all right, I saw you up here, I just wanted to stop by and see what was going on.
Thank you, I saw, appreciated. We got new, uh, treatments from Bro Memphis today.
Good.
And I'm over here doing an inventory, so when, when, when the concrete comes back and, and the plaster ready, they got the grounds ready and, and tiles and everything.
Like, what a mother.
That's Jack, yeah. So when they come back, what will happen, hopefully, we'll get as much of it in the ground as we can, and Tony will bring the mower and the weed whapping and finish getting the weeds down here the way, but it's coming along. It's coming along. Had been a vacant lot. Hey, Jack.
Hey, hey, how are ya?
I'm good this evening. You?
Uh, I'm, doing well.
Wonderful, wonderful. Glad you're up here.
I gotta go on my way.
Thanks, Joe, thanks for coming by.
John.
John, okay, I get John and Joe mixed up. Joe is the one in the, uh, the gray jeep, jeep, yeah.
We're all meeting lots of new people.
There we are, and it'll take me a minute to get the name for each person, yeah.
It takes me a minute.
Well, I so appreciate you, and thank you for letting me burn up your ear.
(laughing).
That was our conversation. Maybe it was needed, maybe it wasn't, I don't know.
I needed it.
I did too. At the council meeting.
Jojo. It's over.
What happened?
The resolution passed on a unanimous vote.
Does it get to the old vote yet?
Uh, we have two months to have meetings, yeah, I see, in thirteen different council districts, and get input from the people, and effect as much change as we possibly can. But one of the city council in Shaysland was on the citizens law enforcement review board when it was created, and he said, here's the problem.
Yeah.
It needs teeth.
Yes.
He said, we couldn't do anything.
Yes.
Because nobody had to cooperate.
Right.
So if we've got one guy on the city council saying it needs teeth.
That's good.
That's a great start.
That's very good. Well, that's a good start, you did a lot to get it done.
And I didn't do as much as everybody else did.
Oh, you did.
And I didn't speak, everybody else spoke. Well, it was a good thing, I mean, Brad, Brad asked me, Brad kind of had honcho on this whole thing, he said, you know, fill out one of the cards so you can speak, and I said, Brad, I'm not gonna speak, you don't want me to speak. I'll end up calling a complotion.